That's a good act you guys have. No, we have another ordinance committee, so some of the members are gonna go and then do that, but they're gonna come right back. And I think there's enough questions probably to the councils that have left to keep this going. So, Councilor Stierz, okay, Councilor Stierz, this is a question from the council.
Yeah, my question is for turning the Lomana.
Turn Lomana?
I've been asked, you know, about the contract, why was not brought to bid? And I'm sure there's an explanation. If you could just lighten me on all that.
The statute of general law, chapter 33B, exempts waste management contracts from the bidding process. It is a specific exception. And the 36 exceptions under the 38th section 1, this is one that is needed to have three committees who they feel is the best fit to control the trash collection.
And I guess it just begs the question, how do we know whether it's competitive or whether, you know, Waste Management has done a great job, but nevertheless, how do we know it couldn't be done for less?
This is where the elected officials and our community commissioner apply on their guidance to make what's in the best interest of the city. But Waste Management is to have a long track record with respect to collection and our fresh collection. It's the elected officials and our appointed officials in the city council. Before this contract being introduced, it is right now a five-year contract. The city council must vote to approve anything in excess of three years. So there will be two votes required by this body. One, to authorize a contract in excess of three years. Right now it's at a five-year term. Second, our ordinance must be amended quite drastically. It allows for trash pickup and collection that will not be permitted under the new system. If it is from, my understanding, it's six months to have the barrels delivered, the recycled barrels delivered. So the council has to have some time to do that, but it will be required after the ordinance has been today.
Thank you. And just a follow-up with either Jim or Mike. Can you fellows tell me your assurances as to the price, the contract price, and whether you are competitive or could we get it for less?
Yeah, you know, I think when you do a contract like this, the reason why the trash collection and recycling contracts were exempt from 30B is because there were a lot of peculiarities to them when it comes to a service contract versus buying the product. The specifications are very, very current and white. There's a lot of, you know, handholding has to go when you do a program like this, and then you need that level of experience. But the other reason is that, you know, the communities can look, and I'm quite sure that the administration did look at surrounding communities, what types of programs they have, what their costs are based on their community size, to get a good feeling that we were, you know, coming in with a very competitive offer. And so that's the one thing that I think really gives comfort to why that 30B exception is there. Because you can do some community comparisons and kind of get a feel for it. And, you know, and I guess the last thing is that, you know, when you look at a program that is going to allow you to save, you know, three to four hundred thousand dollars, you know, year over year, just on operating, you know, cost basis, in an environment where, you know, we have to pay higher wage rates to invest millions and millions of dollars in equipment, and that also should give some comfort about that, you know, we've come forward with what we felt was an extremely aggressive proposal that would make sense for, you know, the city. So I think due diligence has been written on to get us to this point.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor. I'd like to ask Jim and Mike a couple of these questions. In the old contract, specifically that at any time the city stops questioning, needs to answer, the old contract said that at any time that the city put another trash, it's going to come. Basically, from staying reasonable, you know, they wanted to. Am I correct?
Yeah.
No? Does that expose where that previous to DPDW, who started the previous one?
I might have been the third one. There is never a contract that is a early-determined contract with so many days' notice. And if the contractor failed to pick something up after a certain period of time, whether it's 24 hours or three days, if he doesn't respond, then that specific pickup can be taken and given to somebody else. But there was no right to just even allow him to give the contract to somebody else. And this contract was put together in 1999, when I wrote it, 1999, and that wasn't in this one. Maybe it was in previous ones in the old days, but I don't recall anything from 1999 to the present.
I also want to say, Jim, always have a response to my needs, but another question is, unless it's closing six months, because we tried this more times, the lump of the trash ordinance. And the way this contract is written, it's already, you know, it's going to be a lot of issues that are going to arise, one is the plastic bags. Well, the ordinance is written, they probably put plastic bags on top of a colored barrel. Doesn't say that, you know, and people are going to be buying bags or using bags because now they're limiting to one trash container. What are we going to do if people are putting two bags of trash in front of their house? You know, where it's a fifty-dollar fine for that, correct?
Per violation of the ordinance, it's a fifty-dollar fine, yes. There are different ordinances though. I mean, if this ordinance was changed so that it could be enforced, there are other ordinances that could be enforced, that could be interpreted as, you know, you're putting out a nuisance now. By putting trash with food on the ground, it's a nuisance and you're creating a nuisance or a habitat for rodents. And we have rodent ordinance that by creating a habitat or you feeding them, we could still issue a fifty-dollar ticket, but that would make my inspectors life very difficult if we didn't have the trash ordinance that matched this, because they would not be able to enforce. It would be a question if somebody put out six barrels that didn't match that, what would happen? They would end up on the curb, and that would be no reason, ability to enforce it. The DPDW would have to work with Waste Management to get them appropriate additional costs to the city. And that would be a major, major issue we could turn against.
So my next question is, this contract that we're looking at right now, is someone going to be debating in front of the council to stop the vote on it, or is it already kind of signed off on?
It is not affected until the council authorizes the mayor to withdraw the contract for a five-year term.
So we want to change certain things in it. For instance, say that instead of one barrel, it's two barrels, how do we know about doing that? You know what I'm saying? We're not involved in the negotiation, and we also don't know that the, yeah, the cost would be to add one more barrel or one more recyclable barrel to the contract.
I envision multiple areas with representatives of Waste Management to ask these questions. I envision communication with the community commissioner, the inspection services director, Lomana, Waste Management, the mayor's office. If consensus is the best way to go, then everyone's got to.
The contract does attract additional barrels, eleven dollars a month for additional barrels. I did the numbers before we came in, because I knew this was a lot. I mean, of all twenty-seven thousand units, we wanted additional barrel, we had another sixty million dollars lost at that eleven dollars a month. Now, how the eleven dollars, if it was a hot chip case or whatnot, how the eleven dollars will be paid? Right now, the contract provides it's a separate contract between resident and Waste Management. The city does not subsidize the second barrel, as I understand the contract. However, that, you know, that's up to, that's a policy decision on the city. You know, if there's a hot chip or something like that, that's truly a policy decision. But there is a provision in here, more barrels can be given out to people, policy of how they're compensated. You know, the same as if they lose their barrel, if somebody steals it, the sixty-dollar replacement. Again, less than, you know, if you look at the trajectory of multiple communities, multiple units level in, those that need an extra barrel, again, I'll give you an example of, it's been twenty thousand homes, one hundred and fifty total, extra barrels. It's really not, and I know it sounds just like an issue and everybody's worried about it, and I'm not, because I've been through it, you know, a number of times, where some of your biggest fears are things that really are not going to raise their head. And when they do, it's going to be such a small subsector of the community that would be able to, you know, I think accommodate reasonable hospitals or hospital residents or board by the city.
That's a little tough. And with that, Jim, we're in a concern, I'd love to see Waste Management, as you mentioned earlier, make a hundred of these available each year for that reason. And if it's rare, you won't have to give those hundred out. But if you would make it available, I think that would be a goodwill gesture and lend comfort to us in approving this contract.
The contract complements fifty a year at the discretion of the city. We will have fifty carts a year in the city council.
So that's fifty trash and fifty recycle? So it's a limit of matching with?
Well, fifty containers that the city can add and there is.
So that's less than fifty a year, five years?
Fifty a year, twelve, thirty.
But did you say a hundred?
Two hundred, two hundred and fifty over five years.
Two hundred and fifty.
That's correct.
Okay, and so it would only, it would limit us to fifty additional containers a year?
Right, but I mean, you know, again, we've worked with the city a long time, so if there were, because we come out of our blocks, it's like a hundred a year, one of these, and we'll look at to aggregate to fifty over five years and work with the city to make sure. I think if you, you know, if you, obviously, it's not our, you know, role to negotiate a contract complex. I think if you have a concern over fifty barrels versus a hundred barrels, and you communicate that to the administration, you know, perhaps that's something they want to, you know, put a statement around and discuss, but we, we have done a lot of that, you know, that type of stuff. There was nothing in there, you know, before, and that was added at the administration's request. So, you know, those types of things that they, you know, need to, need to look at, as well as some of the policy, you know, decisions. I think the contract is flexible enough to take care of firstly everything that everybody here is talking about. There just may be some policy decisions on who gets accommodated, how they get accommodated, cost structure.
Thank you, Jim. Councilor Stierz. One of my questions is, I hear in the outdoors, there's a house by himself. How are they supposed to get an arrow up there? I'm sure right now, they're like, some ways, they're going to do it, maybe accommodations for it, but I'm just trying to cover all bases while you're here.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, and, you know, certainly, some buddy, a neighbor, is trying to help them out. But again, I guess in the scope of the accommodation piece, you know, will we do, you know, backyard collection, you know, probably not, right? Because people are getting the containers, they're trash out right now, and there's liability issues with our guys, you know, traveling to the T R's. But I think you'll find that in every other community that has done this, will bring on some type of accommodation. If it's, you know, you've got fifty homes of people who are handicapped, and they're going to put a fifteen-gallon bag of trash out, and the administration and the ordinance allows for that, that's something that would work with the city on to try to do. Obviously, want to try to keep as much of a program intact and context using the containers, because that's how, you know, that's how it works. And the more you have exceptions, the more you have service concerns, right? We have to make exceptions all over the city. It gets tough to, you know, to accommodate a, you know, contract of limited things. Handicapped people that need some extra assistance and can't get it from neighbors, if we have to step in, you know, we'll certainly take each of those and try to work with the city to make sure things are handled properly.
Are the dumpsters today, clean up solid garage, there can be a little pickup truck? Is there going to be a limit as to how much material that some of them bring down in the dumpster day?
There, there is a, I think, a current limit of how many items to buy. I want to say I don't.
I don't want to push you off the subject.
No, yeah.
I'm just saying, a lot of people like to put a lot of landlines, especially in my area where a tenant will leave some things behind. And a landlord wants to take those materials and put some in the back pickup truck. Pass, is there anybody aware of the amount of dumpster day?
Throughout the city.
That happens a lot.
See, the thing, the thing is, is again, you know, we're talking about, I think, a little bit of a cultural shift. And, you know, so, you know, I have old apartments in the city before too, and I don't any longer, because there's a lot to it, it's a business. You're responsible for residents, you're responsible for them putting materials out that they shouldn't. And that's really where the responsibility lies, right? That's the business owner, they have to take care of that. To try to accommodate all of that becomes, you know, becomes a real big task for the city. But at any rate, the dumpster days, you know, three times a year, they're going to accommodate those types of situations if they happen in and around the dumpster day. I'm guessing nobody's going to wait, you know, two to four months if they've got, you know, a pile full of all kinds that they need to get, or maybe they will. So it's, and whatever the, whatever the, I guess, rules or restrictions are on dumpster days, they don't change from, you know, from contract to contract. We'll have pickup trucks there, all of containers, the same types of materials, and whatever limitations are, if none, none would have so big a chance.
Councilor Stierz. Could you be, this is our kind of an object, in terms of, you know, days where we have significant snow, what do other communities do? Have we seen it already with the overcrowded sidewalks and streets? I guess, what do other smaller communities use it as all?
Yeah, we certainly had plenty of experience this year with that, right? You know, what happens is, again, you'll find most residents will, you got a little corner in the front of their driveway, put a barrel in there. If it's during a snow event, it's actually a better system, if you will, than what we have today. Today, if it's trash, you get snow overnight, and the DPDW crews apply, generally they apply on the recyclables, you know, it helps us down, right? There's nothing you can do. The one thing with these containers, they're very durable, and the iron can actually wiggle them out of a, out of a snowbank. So we're able to actually provide better service in a snow event. After the snow event, you know, we're asking the residents to, and they'll, by nature, they'll figure out to do it, is just to make an accommodation, you know, at the curb, so they can get their barrel. A lot of times, again, it'll be little corners in the multi-driveways that you'll see up and down every street. You know, I don't think you should go unnoticed that you will, you will find the city to be markedly clear because of that, you know, be very uniformed, containers will be, you know, lined up, whether it's snow or no snow, and you'll experience a much cleaner neighborhood city by using these.
Just one final question, again, you already said this, what's the cost savings?
Cost savings, I think if you look at year over year, what your projection is right now, looks like it'd be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars year over year. And that's with, you know, again, us having to make the investment in, you know, the containers and the trucks to be able to do the work. So it's a pretty significant, you know, savings to go on.
If our recycling rate gets better and our tonnage for the basins, do you guys realize that saving is not something that the city can pass?
If you drive your diversion rate higher, you'll experience lower tipping fee costs, right? Because that's paid for on a related basis, so.
Yeah, there's potential for a lot of savings.
There's potential for lower savings, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. If I may ask a couple of questions from the chairman, any projections for that? What are the, are there projected annual savings, or is this contract costing us more money than FY2013? What's the cost ratio?
Yeah, no, I think that's what the council president asked. So if you look at FY14 compared to what the projection would be under the new program, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings year over year, you know, on an operating basis. And then an additional one-time fund, if you will, allocation of over three hundred thousand dollars. So you get your pure operating savings, and then you get a fund of three hundred plus thousand dollars.
Next question is new construction. What if the city, what happens if a new house is built? Who pays for the barrels? The barrel, are those houses already contemplated in this contract? Are we going to have to pay eleven dollars a month for each house to build?
Yeah, there's, there's some, you know, there's some room, some capacity in the projected number, so we carry out up to twenty-seven thousand carts to be issued. And then once it goes over, that's when it starts to kick in. So you'll have, you may have some capacity, you know, plus we have, you know, the additional carts every year that, you know, we would issue. But once it gets over that mark, then that's, that's where that, you know, that dollar value kicks in.
Hypothetically, I'm sure you're definitely, someone is living in a house, they have two barrels, they move and take the barrels with them, and someone else moves in, they're excited to live in the city of London. How do they get barrels? Who pays for those barrels?
That, again, is the, that kind of was the press to try to add some additional containers into the, into the contract. I will tell you, in most communities, the new owner has to come in and buy them. Because they're buying a house, and somebody's taking that personal property, but that's a policy decision. So, you know, the contract has extra containers. City can say, hey, we've got those extra containers, this person moved into the house, that one took the other containers, we want you to just give, give them those containers. That's what we're going to do. I mean, we're going to be directed by the city of how to handle those, you know, those policy issues.
So a few more, if I can just continue. The bags, we obviously have a road initiative trying to address, and I think this is part of the goals, of trying to address the road problems. What type of bags are these? Are these bags going to be left on the ground? Current ordinances, council, city points out, requires them to be on top of the barrel. What if it's only a bag that they would leave in the morning on the way out, like someone who's disabled and can't drive?
Well, again, you know, that's a combination that we're going to have to talk about, right? The program contemplates that everybody's going to use this container. If there's exceptions to that, then we have to work on those accommodations. In terms of, if the city decides to offer an overflow bag option, that bag can be put on top of the container. It would be, you know, generally a different color with a city insignia on it, so we know that that's a bag that we have to collect.
Is it special material, or is it something that can't be penetrated by rodents, or is it just like a heavy bag?
It's, it's a little bit thicker, hefty bag. It really is not something that is going to be, you know, approved. So that's why it's, you know, you've got to be careful of having a widespread bag program. You really want the material to be in the, in the container. Again, you know, the communities where they do have it, it was done because of the concern of what's going to happen, you know, we really need this, and then, you know, we implemented the program, and very few people actually ended up using it. But I think if you've got one extra bag, you put it on top of that container on trash day, you've got a pretty safe region, you're not going to be creating, you know, road mission.
Final question, you said this, I know you used that for that example, but I want to go to Lowell. Have you experienced Lowell with how you've been playing in that city? Because I think demographic, there's a large population in London, being about fifteen thousand to twenty thousand people more than. What were some of the pitfalls that happened in Lowell that we can avoid in London? What have you learned from implementing that contract? And what's the best course of action for us as officials to take? We're going to be giving calls when this, this program gets rolled out.
Yeah, I think it's the, in Lowell, the city handled the majority of the public education. And so I think what I would recommend is that you let us handle the majority of the public education in collaboration with the city, so that we're bringing the technical expertise, and city administrators bringing the field where the city and the nuances of the city to make sure that we handle those. And I think if we work together like that, you know, we'll avoid miscommunication issues, we'll make sure that there is the right level of communication and education, so that people understand the program. And one of the things that we'll, you know, make available is just maybe some of the sample educational pieces that were done in other communities where Lowell was very well. So you can get, you know, just kind of a feel of what we, what we do and what we say to folks, so they understand.
That's great. Just real quickly, in terms of the timeline, what days is people looking at? In terms of, do you have any questions?
No, we've been negotiating the contract for quite some time, and initially, we had targeted eight or twelve. But it's essentially, it's about six months, or about six months from the execution. We need about six months of equipment and, and the containers.
Councilor, well, Councilor, actually, Councilor, line. We're going to ask you a question. How's the city council supposed to proceed? What is, what is our timeline? What votes are we going to be taking? Can you kind of lay out a projection of how we should be moving along?
At some point, the city council will vote to authorize the mayor to enter into a five-year contract with Waste Management.
And that hasn't happened yet?
That has not happened yet.
Okay, was it a projection that this may have been signed, or?
It is not valid until the council has, 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 has.
So then they have a wet signature on it, however, until we, and then the timeline, six months starts from that point?
Well, the day that the council votes to authorize the mayor to sign it, in six months, I believe Waste Management makes a speech, and to this point, the goal is to do it not in the winter months. The goal is to have barrels delivered in the summer or the fall before the, before the storm. That is a practical, that is a real expectation of the system, that it is a legal question.
So if you're allowing six months, theoretically, the last month being October, the lead's had all rolled out, that puts us in a situation where? So we have the next three weeks of March, and then the entire month maybe to try to deal with this.
So my friend has been with me for, and then to have post-vote for the council to authorize the sign off on this contract, there is, it will have to be three, the ISD director, or other tools, but in a ideal world, the council will have a license that works with this contract, makes it easier on the inspectors and the DPDW commissioner, that's what we're saying to make it work.
Councilor Stierz. Unfortunately, we don't live in an ideal world, and for me, or my question.
And my question is, let's say that some of the councilors are looking at, and they're going to create everything that's in that first line. Do we, if we wanted to change something, do we have the right to ask those changes and alter the process? How much of the payments would be?
The mayor has the authority to enter into a three-year contract, and they act out, it's a little of the city council. Probably resulting in some renewed negotiations with Waste Management. I'm assuming that there is extending the payments, because they have to buy new trucks and buy new equipment, and the price that we have to quarter to negotiate at this point. Factors in, it's a five-year contract, not a three-year contract. If this council does not vote to authorize the mayor to enter into the contract, into a five-year contract, the contract is not covered till the end.
My other question is back to recycling containers. It's determined that some of the needs that have to, I'm sorry, the statute of goal of this whole program is to get the, 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 as I was saying. Are we going to, are you looking to charge all those people that live in the walls for a bunch of that extra recyclable containers as well?
Yeah, this is a, you know, there's a mechanism in the agreement that allows up to twenty-seven thousand trash, twenty-seven thousand recycling carts. If you notice, a little bit of wind blowing in that, right? So that becomes a policy, a policy discussion up to the twenty-seven thousand. After the twenty-seven thousand, from a collection standpoint, what our charge is, is to provide the container and to provide the service, whether it's, you know, trash or recyclables in the container, doesn't really matter from, from a collection standpoint. From a disposal standpoint, obviously, the more recycled containers, hopefully, the less, the lower the tonnage. Perhaps that provides some budgetary relief for the city, besides, you know, we want to be able to accommodate those, those requests. But again, if you think of it from a practical standpoint, if there are, if there is no charge to putting out additional containers, a lot of people might just ask for the non-need, and that's, that's really why that's there. So I honestly, I think if you, if you look at the real needs, and again, we're doing it based on experiments, right, in other communities, the real needs for second ninety-six gallon recycling containers have proven to be very, very small. Now, again, we're asking people to, you know, break cardboard boxes down, and, you know, crush plastic containers a little bit. You know, not just drop a box in and say, well, I need a second container, and that's, there's part to that, right? Because it's, you know, it's a few homes, labor, that's, you know, that's kind of our business. So, you know, the goal is to try to minimize the environmental footprint as much as we can, as well as the economic footprint. So preparing the material the right way, breaking it down, putting it in that container, if everybody does that, you know, you're probably going to have a few hundred requests for people that just can't live with ninety-six gallons every other weekend. You know, if we look at, you know, the track record of the city right now, you may be one, but you're one of a few that produce over ninety-six gallons of recyclables. And just look at, you know, just the, the history of the city. So this is really an exceptionally large step to, to bring this community, I guess, to more reasonable levels of waste diversion. So I think you'll find that most people will be able to deal with that, most of the exceptions, you know, we just have to accommodate.
As we're talking, we're thinking about the product, twenty-seven thousand barrels. How, Mike, would you answer this question? Is that residents, the bad residents, or is that including three families, two families, and some fours and fives?
Six family.
Okay, so you're taking into consideration every single apartment, and every single, single family home?
Correct, that's right. And the, the, there are condominiums that are, if you will, they're probably listed as single-family units, but they are handled separately, because they have dumpsters, that's also part of this, you know, program. That's why, you know, we feel like it's probably a little bit of a, but, you know, that'll be, you know, we'll get down to the, to the implementation stage and have an address list that lists every, every, um, address, now the housing units, to be able to do that.
All right, just to touch on condominiums, I get a read in there that they're responsible. Get another start, all right?
Correct.
Now, the condominiums, we said that the people that lived in them have the same rights as anybody.
It's ninety-nine, ninety-nine, ninety-seven, ninety-seven ordinance that first allowed condominiums to be collected as part of the city's waste collection. And that the ordinance, which was enacted by the council at that time, required the condominiums to purchase it on the day that their own dumpsters. So they have their dumpsters, they're picked up once a week. The problem that comes in with the water is not the problem, what comes in with the water of these condominiums is they're picked up more than once a week. So Waste Management may grab them one day, but they may not be grabbed on other days. They may have a private contractor to do all five days, like the stadium condos. I mean, when I was commissioner, it was five days a week they get them picked up. They got one free day from the city from a contractor or through the community.
Any further questions? Just like to ask one more favor, if you would. Because this is such a big issue for the city, but obviously, this is the first meeting we've been able to have, just digesting the contract as counselors. We'd love to be pretty regularly with you folks, if you wouldn't mind. There's obviously more information that we have, and more details to flesh out, and committee setting would be helpful, if we have any help as well. Would you commit to being available in the course of, most likely, the next seven to eight weeks?
Yeah, I mean, we're certainly, you know, available to answer, you know, technical questions, and, you know, support the process. You know, I, I know that you want time to digest and, and make sure you're doing the right thing for the, for the city, we want that as well. But there's, you know, there is cost savings to be had. This, as Counselor Craig pointed out, was kind of originally slated to try to blow out in April. And so, the, the longer that this goes, the more the, the city is actually spending in, in waste collection costs. So, you know, we've been through these implementations, these rollouts. You know, I would encourage and hope that we could, you know, perhaps shorten up here the time that it takes for us to answer all your questions. Certainly need to be able to do that, but to, to see if we can kind of get to a meeting alliance, you know, sooner than rather than later, so that we can do a good job, have the implementation done, and hopefully, you know, bring in the, you know, the savings to the city that, you know, I anticipate is probably being funded. And, and hopefully, you know, get the, the community to recycle at a little bit higher level. But, you know, we'll, we'll do our best to accommodate your, your meetings.
We certainly appreciate that, of course, we'll have a public hearing where your folks and probably people from the city will present, again, something more kind of a thirty-thousand-foot level, because the public will be here to be able to have their input as well. And we'd love you to also work with possible similar committees and the public works committee more regularly to try to iron out some of the questions and just get it really on the same page. Any further questions? Very happy, appreciative of your time tonight, folks from Waste Management, McDevitt, JT, and John La, motion to adjourn. Sure, motion made, seconded. Couple of favors, aye, or no, you guys have. Adjourn, we'll be meeting at eight o'clock for a committee of a whole in about forty, forty-five minutes.